I now call the work-study session for the Planning and Zoning Commission to order. Will we get a roll call, please?
Commissioner Rutherford? Commissioner Roberts? Commissioner Griffiths?
President.
Commissioner Laney?
Here.
Vice Chairperson Rankin?
Here.
Chairperson Searcher?
Here.
And moving on to item number three, discussion items, no action will be taken this evening. We have a presentation by John Mundelow, who is the Town's Water Resources Manager, in discussion with the Commission relative to the town's water resources, how such resources are managed and with new development, and the town's update to the 2025 general plan, environmental planning and water resources element. And so, just want to clarify that this is the beginning. We will be having a lot of these work-study sessions. This is the start of the update to the general plan, which is General Plan 2035, and this is the first topic for us, and it's water. There will be no questions or discussion from the public. It will just be information to the Commission, and then the Commission can ask some questions, but that's about it. And then we'll be moving on to the, we'll adjourn this meeting, and then we will be moving on to the business section of the Planning and Zoning Commission. So with that, take it away, John.
Thank you, Mr. Commissioner, Mr. Chairman, and Commissioners. Yeah, as you noted, my name's John Mundelow. I'm with the Town of Prescott Valley. Just a little bit of background, because it seems to be important to folks as to how long you've been here. So my folks were residents in Prescott Valley when they were the only residents of Prescott Valley. They lived in the only home in the whole valley, in the whole lonesome valley. And before I was born, they decided to move to Skaw Valley, which at that time was a lot larger community. There started to be a few houses here, and, you know, Skaw Valley was a town whose town limit signs were nailed to the same post. So to say that that was a bigger town than Prescott Valley is really saying something. So I started learning about water at that point in time on a farm when I was about six, and later got my PhD at 17 around here. That's a Prescott High diploma. And went to the University of Arizona, got a degree in engineering with a specialty in soils and water engineering. I was kind of realizing recently that I've now been working as a water resource professional for 34 years. I've spent nearly 17 of those years with the Town of Prescott Valley. So talk a little bit about what's going on with town water supplies, as soon as I get this sorted here. I'll talk, and I try not to do this, I'll talk about we and us, and sometimes that means the broader we and us. And by that, I mean sometimes it's how the state manages our water resources, and we live in an area where our water resources are jointly managed between a number of water users. It's not just Prescott Valley that we have to be concerned with. So a seminal moment in Arizona history was 1980 Groundwater Management Act, a groundwater management passed by the legislature in order to enable importation of water supplies from the Colorado River. And the water supplies from the Colorado River were authorized by the Carter Administration because of the Groundwater Management Act in 1980. That act is hugely important to us because those water laws that were established, and these are real. I bring the book along. I know it's dated 2006 because nobody has printed documents anymore, so back when you had printed documents. It's online, right? But it's real. Water laws are real in Arizona. We just don't make up new laws because we feel differently about something related to water resources now than we once did. We have to go to the legislature. So when the legislature created those water laws, they also created active management areas, as you can see on the map on the screen, if I can do this. So these five active management areas encompass about 13% of the state of Arizona, but about 85% of our state's population lives in those basins. You can see the Prescott Active Management Area there, near the center of the state. We'll talk about that one a lot. Along with the laws and the active management areas, they created an agency. The Arizona Department of Water Resources was created at that moment to manage those laws, to make sure that the water users in those basins adhere to those laws, and manage new systems and processes as they move forward. One of the most significant ones is to create occasionally, about every decade, a new management plan. So these management plans guide what we do in the active management areas, you know, between the decades when they come out. So that law created some goals for us. It created the safe yield goal, wanted us to reach safe yield by year 2025. It also immediately set forth a moratorium on additional pumping for irrigated agriculture that came out right away. And then later on, the Assured Water Supply Program came into full effect within the AMAs. A lot of other things were brought forward at that time. We have water conservation requirements. Now, those conservation requirements apply to primarily the water providers, and so individual citizens don't see heavy-handed requirements placed on them, as long as we as water providers meet those broader conservation requirements. We have measuring and reporting. Everything we do, every drop of water we take out of the ground, as large water providers gets reported to the Department of Water Resources. They use that within their management plans to see if we're on target, and to create stricter rules from time to time if we're not. There's a lot of other things we won't go into, well spacing requirements and such. So just in a broad brush, what this means is the state legislature, not the town council, make water loss. The Department of Water Resources, not the town council, allocates water. Town council does not allocate water. ADWR allocates that water when lots are created, not when a building permit is issued, but when the lot upon which that building's going to go is originally created. And we'll talk about this in a future slide, but most of the lots in Prescott Valley received an allocation from Arizona Department of Water Resources more than 20 years ago. So although you see vertical development, it's based on water supplies that were allocated more than 20 years ago. There's just not enough room on this thing. Segueing a little bit into some hydrology, so that we don't kind of lose sense of really what we're talking about. So we talked about the active management area. This is a little bit better view of that active management area boundary. It runs roughly from the top of Mingus Mountain over to the top of Granite Mountain, east to west. It runs from the Bradshaw Mountains north to kind of those low hills that are north of Chino Valley. Within that basin, you see the colored polygon. That is what we refer to as the primary aquifer. So most of the water, the productive water, exists in that primary aquifer. It's not to say there's not water elsewhere, but it's not as deep or as significant. When you hear people talk about water, often the term's used as water table, or underground lake, or something like that. And it is a large volume of water. It's a volume of water that's roughly equivalent, in storage, in our aquifer, to about two and a half times what's in Lake Pleasant, if you've ever been to Lake Pleasant, or about maybe 330 Watson Lakes, if you've driven by Watson Lake. So that's what's underground. It's unseeable, but we know what's going on down there because we and others have drilled a lot of wells into the aquifer, and all of that information is reported to the Arizona Department of Water Resources, the geologic formations that are drilled into the depth of the water, some of the water quality information. So we get a good picture of what's underground, because at this point in time, there's been about 13,000 wells drilled into our aquifer. Town of Prescott Valley pumps from about 28 wells. But it's not an underground lake. The water exists in primarily luveal fill material. So those mountains that we referred to, those were once a lot bigger, and the valley that we're standing on was once a lot deeper. But over time, that material eroded and filled up the valley, and with it, it was filled up with water. So that pore space between the sand and gravel and rocks is where our water exists. And if you take a volume of it, perhaps 10% of that volume is water. So that's what we drill our wells into, and we can extract that water. Does the Groundwater Management Act work? Well, it's done quite a bit. This is groundwater, this graph is groundwater pumping going back in time to about 1965. And groundwater pumping has not increased. As a matter of fact, it's gone down a little bit, if you look at the trend. So what's going on there? So I mentioned earlier that the Groundwater Management Act set a moratorium on new irrigation pumping. So that set a trend forward and established water rights for that irrigation use. So those irrigation rights have largely gone away. And so the volume of water that you see prior to about the 1980s, 1990s, this is water that was used in our area for irrigation. That was our economy then. We had a lot of agriculture, we had a lot of mining, a lot of cattle grazing, but there wasn't much else. But as people started flooding in, the Groundwater Management Act, by creating value in those water rights, you see that those agricultural water rights have been converted over to rooftops, essentially. We'll talk a little bit about that. So, but we're pumping too much. Overall, we, as all water users in the active management area, because the city of Prescott depends on this, the town of Chino Valley depends on this water source, as do roughly 13,000 private wells. So combined, we're overpumping the aquifer. The safe yield volume, according to the Department of Water Resources, is right here, about 10,000 acre feet per year. If we all could reduce our groundwater pumping to about that amount, we'd be in a safe yield status. But that doesn't mean it's tragic, all right? We're pumping probably 0.3% of the aquifer volume per year beyond what's naturally replenished. It's not what we're supposed to be doing, but we're allowed to do it. The state legislature, in its wisdom, understood that to build an economy, to build, you know, potential for growth and keeping our kids at home, we had the right and the ability to use some of our groundwater resources for a period of time until we could reach safe yield. So that's the status, the state we're in. We're in a state of overdraft, but we are trending, we are trying to reach safe yield. The tool to reach safe yield is through imported supplies. That was established by the Arizona Legislature very, very early on. It was established and reasserted in every management plan that the Department of Water Resources issues. So how does growth get water? So it changes over time. It's changed as legislation and rules have been enacted. This period of time before the 1980 Groundwater Management Act, there were about 11,000 lots that were established in Prescott Valley proper by development. It was prior to any Groundwater Management Act, and so they received a default 100-year assured water supply determination when future developments came in. So the act was passed in 1980, and those future lots had to go and get a certificate of assured water supply. We'll talk a bit about that in a minute. So that's an onerous test, but during that period of time, 1981 to 2000, about 1999, the Department of Water Resources, again, it was the Department of Water Resources, wasn't the town. Town wasn't even in the water business during this time period. Issued allocations to groundwater, issued allocations to groundwater for all kinds of new growth throughout the active management area, because it was allowed. It was state law. It was understood that we would reach safe yield later. Then along came 1999 Declaration of Groundwater Mining. That was another seminal moment for our area. In that point, at that point in time, the Department of Water Resources says, you're, as a collective group of water users, taking too much water out of the ground, even though it was allowed for the people we established water rights for, we're not going to allow any more uses from the groundwater. So they stopped at that point in time issuing new groundwater rights, at least to planned developments in Prescott Valley. We'll talk about some of the exemptions. So since that point in time, in the past 21 years, 22 years now, the Town of Prescott Valley has seen 362 lots approved, and has 290 additional lots going through the Certificate of Assured Water Supply process, recently approved as a CAWS, but has not gone for final approval with the town council. That's all. 22 years. Guess how much groundwater was allocated for those lots? Zero. It had to all come from renewable resources. So in 22 years, Town of Prescott Valley has seen no additional groundwater allocations. Those lots are approved on what are called reclaimed water credits. So that's affluent that we created our treatment plant and recharge. So going back then, so the pre-1990 subdivisions, I pretty much covered this. We're allowed to mine groundwater. The idea was you had to prove you had a 100-year assured water supply, but the department would let you have that supply if you could prove it down to 1,000 foot below surface. So most water levels in Prescott Valley are roughly 500 feet. So if you could, in the next 100 years, keep your water levels above 100 feet, Department of Water, or above 1,000 feet, ADWR would say, here, you can have your CAWS. But again, that was because they understood we were going to replace that water with imported supplies. 1999, they said, you know, your imported supplies are limited. We're not going to allow any more growth on anything but renewable supplies. In other words, new subdivisions cannot increase the draft on the aquifer. That's the law. Makes it sustainable. Real quick, I don't want to go through this, but this just gives you an idea of the onerous test that is required to obtain a certificate of assured water supply, a seven-part test, 210-day administrative review period, and it's typically much longer than that. There's a public notice and comment period, so it's all transparent, and it's required before a subdivider can sell lots. But that's not the only creation of lots that's allowed. So you saw that we only had 650 new lots approved in 22 years in Prescott Valley, but there's an exemption to that law that has allowed 4,500 new lots to receive groundwater allocations in our active management area in that same 22-year period. Those users get a groundwater allocation, they're created, they're new lots created through the lot split exemption. So the legislature said, there's some magical number, five. If you're only going to split your property five ways or less, you don't have to follow any of the rules. If you're going to split your property six ways or more, you have to follow these stringent rules. So it's kind of like saying, you know, if you're driving a car, and you only have five passengers, you can drive recklessly and speed, and, you know, it's no big deal. But, you know, even if you, say, run into another vehicle that's got six passengers or more, don't worry about it, because those people in, you know, that have covered you with the certificates of assured water supply have to make sure you have your water. Because what happens with all of those lots is they go forward and they drill exempt wells. And when those exempt wells don't work out, they weren't drilled deep enough, they were drilled outside of the primary aquifer, whatever issues they may have, they don't move, they don't tear down their house, they come to the Town of Prescott Valley, they go to the city of Prescott, and they still get their water. It's even more impactful here near Prescott Valley, north by, north of Highway 89A, for example. What my map shows are lots that existed in 2000, over on your left-hand side of the screen, and all the new lots that have come in since that period of time, since the Department of Water Resources says, we're not giving out new groundwater allocations. But guess what? Here's a whole bunch of new groundwater allocations. So they apply one set of rules to the Town of Prescott Valley, they apply another set of rules to other landowners. Just to give you an idea of some of those areas that have changed, in case you don't spot it, what I have there, just highlights some of the new areas that have lot split, received groundwater allocations right near us. So it's pretty impactful on us from a number of ways. One area here, over on the, I cannot get this thing to operate. Where is it? I lost my cursor. So anyway, the point I wanted to make is, as we have invested heavily in municipal supply wells, we see those same areas get split, and we have new homes with septic systems placed right on top of, or right adjacent to municipal wellfields. And so they're discharging untreated wastewater through the ground, right near our wellfields, and there's nothing we can do for it. Nothing. Furthermore, when we do put in a new well, we have to make sure it is spaced so far away from any existing exempt well that it causes us a great deal of expense. For example, we just purchased what we call the Monks' Well from the Fane family because we could not find a piece of ground far enough away from all of these exempt well developments so that we wouldn't impact them. So our municipal systems can't impact exempt well users, but exempt well users can impact our municipal systems. And at the end of the day, and people look at Prescott Valley, oh, you're just a big government organization. But at the end of the day, we serve 22,000 customers, some 50-some-thousand individuals. Those individuals are no different than any individual with an exempt well. So equal application of the law should be what we look for. Talk a little bit about what Prescott Valley does, because I know there are, there's a great deal of concern and misinformation out in the community about what's going on with our water supplies. I just wanted to highlight the previous graph. There we go. So this is not our hydrograph. That's a fancy word for a graph about water. This is the Arizona Department of Water Resources hydrograph. This is our central wellfield, and as you can see, we've brought water levels up in our central wellfield, 150-some feet in the past three years, because we're letting it rest. For a number of years, we could not let it rest, because it was our primary source of supply, we had to rely on it. But over the years, we've put a lot of effort into spreading out our wells so that we can put impact somewhere else and not just in one location. So as you can see, huge increases in water levels. Water conservation. We do great at water conservation. Now, we had a pretty big bump up in 2020, but, you know, hottest, driest year on record in the middle of COVID, right? I think it's an unusual year. Nonetheless, we see our general water use at about 100 gallons per person per day or less. Now, that's not necessarily what you use at home. It incorporates all of the water uses throughout the community for government centers, for town parks, for businesses, commerce, schools, and homes divided by the population that is served. So that's what gallons per capita day means. And as I said, we reclaim water and recharge it. So about 65% of the water we serve to our in-town customers, just as a side note, Town of Prescott Valley serves quite a few systems outside of town boundaries. So we serve all of the needs for Castle Canyon Mesa County, Prescott Country Club County, Diamond Valley County, Bradshaw Water Company County. None of those systems are on a wastewater collection. So that water goes out and doesn't come back. So our in-town customers, though, we get about 65% of the water we serve back. We're able to get about 80% of that back into recharge. Some of the water is used for the Stone Ridge Golf Course, that delays groundwater pumping that would have otherwise occurred. We use water within the plant, we use water, some water at the Mountain Valley Park. So the way this, you know, the concept is that it's exchange water. So we'll put the water in the ground in one location of the aquifer, and that allows us to exchange for additional withdrawals from one of our municipal wells that's located further away. The picture on the left is our North Plains Recharge Basins. Those are settling basins. On the right, we have our in-channel facility that's in the channel of the Alphaya River. We've been operating that one since about 2003. And we've just recently completed an injection well. This is the first direct injection well in the Prescott Active Management Area. We don't have the above-ground equipment installed yet. Actually, we don't have it designed yet, but we're coming along on that, or the permits from ADWR that allow us to recharge it, to operate it. So that's located at Mountain Valley Park, and so we'll be able to take water from our affluent supply and put it underground. One of the issues we have in Prescott Valley with recharge is there is a lot of clay in Prescott Valley. And it's not only pervasive, it's deep. So this allows us to get down below that clay into the more open formations below and operate it that way. So, and then I just wanted to share this, because there's a lot of misinformation about how much we're supposed to recharge. As I pointed out before, the safe yield groundwater allowable groundwater pumping in the active management area is about 10,000 acre feet per year. And so without necessarily agreement from the Arizona Department of Water Resources, I figure our share is about 2,500 acre feet. So that's a safe yield allowable limit for the Town of Prescott Valley. We recharge about, over the past five years, we've recharged about 650 acre feet of water per year through our recharge facilities. We've donated about 775 acre feet per year to the aquifer for the good of the aquifer, that's a permanent recharge. And so in the past five years, our withdrawals, our net groundwater withdrawals above the safe yield limit are about 180 acre feet per year. It's not a huge hit on the aquifer. That's not always going to be the case, because our reclaimed water credits will end up going to new development. Then finally, I've talked a lot about importation. What are we really talking about when we talk importation? We're talking the Big Chino Water Ranch. So you can see down on the bottom, there's my cursor, that's the active management area boundary. This boundary is the Big Chino Sub Basin. That red area is the Big Chino Water Ranch. City of Prescott and Town of Prescott Valley jointly purchased that water ranch in 2004 with the goal of setting up a wellfield out there and bringing that water into the active management area. We're the junior partner in that project. The state legislature had set aside that water for the city of Prescott a long time ago. 1991 legislation set aside Big Chino Water for the Prescott AMA, and that was in consideration of Prescott and Yavapai Prescott Indian Tribe exchanging their CAP water. So the CAP water, Prescott received the CAP allocation in 1983, so did the tribe. The idea back then was that the city could withdraw water directly from the Verde River and exchange their CAP and exchange their CAP rights to downstream user. That really wasn't practical, uh, so the city worked through a series of complex exchanges and agreements, um, to allow them to withdraw groundwater from the Big Chino Sub Basin. The initial idea was to withdraw that water near Paulden, um, there's a lot of concerns about potential impacts for the Verde River. Um, so we moved the pumping location about 20 miles up basin on the other side of formations that, that slowed down some of that water, uh, from reaching the Verde River. Furthermore, we reached a settlement, an enforcement, excuse me, an enforceable agreement with the Salt River Project to not harm the Verde River with our pumping. Now, we're not pumping now, but our future pumping. We are to not harm the Verde River, and we agreed to that. To this point in time, there is not one other group, not one other agency, not one other environmental group who has signed any form of an enforceable agreement to preserve the Verde River. Only Prescott, Prescott Valley, and Salt River Project. So it's on the dotted line. That's where you see accountability, that's where you see responsibility, when you have an enforceable agreement. That agreement wasn't only signed with Salt River Project, the biggest water agency in the state, but it was reviewed and approved by the Arizona Legislature. You don't get heavier than that. So, that's our future supply. And we've been working for the past several years to make sure we have a scientific, um, approach to developing any mitigation that's necessary, so we can withdraw that water. Uh, one of the reasons I think we're in pretty good shape is, the Big Chino Water Ranch has been pumped for irrigated agriculture for 80 years. It hasn't, that pumping hasn't harmed the Verde River, it hasn't even lowered water levels at the Big Chino Water Land, Big Chino Water Ranch. They're about 30 feet below the ground. And we've shown through scientific testing that that water column goes 2,500 feet deep. There's a lot of water up there. So that's basically, uh, the rundown on the presentation, so, Mr. Chairman?
Thank you, John. And commissioners, have any questions?
John, recently, um, in the local news, we'd done something, um, with a, a water field or area up in the, in the Chino area. What exactly was that?
Uh, the town purchased a transferable water right that happened to be attached to a piece of ground up there. Um, so the, the seller was not willing to, we didn't really want the property, um, but they insisted that the property go with the purchase. So we purchased what's called a type-two, uh, non-irrigation grandfather right. Uh, so what that does is that allows us to put that in a bank to offset water use from workforce housing, water use from, uh, future commercial developments in the town, so that we can get a little bit closer to safe yield here. Um, so that was, uh, I think it was 68 acre feet, uh, type-two water right purchase. So the, the property is, uh, near Del Rio Springs, uh, in Chino Valley. We'll have to yet determine what we do with the property, but, you know, we're still in escrow, so.
The, the water ranch purchase happened a long time ago.
Right, yeah, don't, don't, uh, for the sake of the audience, we don't want to confuse Chino Valley with Big Chino.
Okay.
They are different basins, so the water right we're talking about is located, uh, kind of to the northeast of this dot in Chino Valley. It's within the active management area. Water rights can be transferred around in the active management area, so this is one that's transferable. And so we won't pump from that location, we'll bring that water right here, we'll go ahead and assign it to our wells, our intention is not to pump it, but if we do, it will be because we're going to offset some other use that would otherwise have come from the groundwater system.
So, uh, back to the, the water ranch itself, that, um, is up in the, in the Paulden area, um, with the growth going on in our area now, is there a point in time where we will, um, have to bring that water in? Can you understand what I'm saying?
Yes.
Just because of our, of development?
Right. If, if safe yield is important to our community, and I believe it is, a sustainable supply of water for our communities, we need that water supply, there's no doubt about it. That has always been part of the plan for this AMA. It's been part of the plan for the other AMAs, uh, guess which supply they got? They got Central Arizona Project Supply, Big Canal off the Colorado River. That was going to be our supply too, but instead, we now have a groundwater supply set aside for our use, um, by the state legislature.
So my, my understanding is that if a developer comes in today, uh, and has a piece of property, uh, that he's basically starting from scratch and wants to do, um, wants the town, our board here to, uh, give, um, preliminary approval so that they can go in for, um, their 100-year Assured Water Supply, um, what, what kind of timeframe is involved in that? And is the town, how is the Town of Prescott Valley involved in that process?
Now, the, uh, the future developer does need to receive a preliminary plat approval. Um, that's the beginning of their planning process for understanding water. That gives them the, um, um, status to meet with the Department of Water Resources about water. So they would begin the process of acquiring a water right that is eligible to be pledged to a CAWS. So water rights, uh, people pan water rights, don't ask me why, they say it's paper water. Water rights are as tangible as the deed to your house or the title to your car. You need that piece of paper to license your car so you can drive it legally, you need that water right, so that you can move forward with a real water use. So the water right and the preliminary plat approval get put together when they apply for a Certificate of Assured Water Supply at ADWR. The process, it says they give you 210 days, but they often kick back, um, the application, request more information. In the case of Jasper Phase 1, uh, they proceeded to acquire water rights, in their case, they purchased reclaimed water credits on the market. Uh, the Town of Prescott Valley does not own those, this third-party vendor owns reclaimed water credits. So the Jasper Development purchased some of those, got the preliminary approvals, and then moved forward with an application with, with ADWR. Um, and I'm not going to be exact on this, but it was about a two-year process.
Commissioner Griffiths?
Thank you, Chairman. Mr. Munderlo, back on the injection well?
Yes.
Is it possible, does the injection well increase the 65% of recovery at all? What's that connection?
No, the, the 65% recovery is what we get back is wastewater, which we then treat. Um, it's, it's the, um, as I pointed out here on this slide, that 775 acre feet that we donate to the aquifer every year, we'll be able to, um, gain credit from that, so then that will go into our bank rather than, uh, for the general good of the other users in the AMA.
Thank you.
Any other questions from the commission? Seeing none, Eric, do you have anything to add? Okay. All right, thank you, John.
Thanks, sir.
Appreciate it. All right, at this point in time, is there a motion to adjourn the work-study session?
I'll make that motion to adjourn the work-study.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Aye. We stand adjourned. We'll take a quick break, and then we'll read adjourn with our works, work studies, or actually, our, our work session.